Okay, I want to call this regular meeting of Union County Board of County Commissioners to order, and as usual, we'll open with invocation. If you feel led to, you may bow while I return thanks. Our gracious heavenly Father, I come to you tonight, a sinner saved by grace. I ask that you provide us with wisdom and care so that we make all decisions in the best interest of your kingdom, the people of Union County. We ask that you protect our firefighters, our law enforcement, our EMTs and EMSs. Lord, we need you to give us guidance and to place a protective cover over our sick and help bring them back. I pray these and all this in your name. Amen. Now, if you'll stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing tonight, we're going to have a public hearing on Union County Tobacco Use Ordinance, and Mr. Dennis Joyner will come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present something that actually started pre-COVID, occurred back in 2018 when we were looking at the tobacco ordinance here in Union County. And we're revisiting that effort to adjust that or recommend adjusting that ordinance to be more comprehensive in its impact. I'll present the first part of this. I also have Stephanie Starr here, who is Division Director in Community Support and Outreach, who's going to share a little bit at the end about sort of how we would propose implementing and providing some education around this. This ordinance, the current ordinance is that we have restricts smoking that are currently in very building-specific locations. So it's not a comprehensive countywide ordinance. It restricts tobacco or smoking in public libraries, the courthouse, Public Health and Social Services Building, and the old post office building. The focus is on no smoking inside the designated buildings. It doesn't consider any other forms of tobacco such as vaping or chewing tobacco, and it does not restrict use near entrances except for the Human Services Building. When we started looking at ordinances across or policies across North Carolina, we noticed that in most of the counties and municipalities, they had a smoke-free or tobacco-free policy or ordinance or rule in those government buildings. And you notice that ours is white here in Union, and that's primarily because it is not a comprehensive ordinance. It's sort of building-specific and kind of fragmented. This is a map that shows smoke-free or tobacco-free grounds across governments, and so you can see there's less of those. However, there are a fair number across North Carolina that have smoke-free or tobacco-free grounds. The Human Services Board met on two occasions and looked at the recommendation to provide a tobacco-free ordinance that would be comprehensive across the county property, and that's to make it more consistent, more comprehensive, and consolidate that, those building-specific ordinances into one for all of the county property, and to also expand the scope to include other forms of smoking, dipping, chewing, and other nicotine delivery devices such as vaping and electronic cigarettes, and also to expand the scope to include county vehicles. The updated revision that we've worked with legal staff on was presented at the November Human Services Board meeting, and they agreed that they wanted to support that and recommended moving that along. Basically, you have the updated revision here that essentially puts forth a requirement for prohibiting tobacco products on county, in county buildings and on county property.
Good evening, and thank you again for having us here. I just want to talk a little bit about the implementation plan. So our goal, if you are, if you do pass this ordinance, is to go live on July 1st of this year. We didn't want to do it right away and flip the switch. We wanted to have a good plan together. So we're going to send out communications to our staff, put signage in county buildings and properties, present on social media, and also present education to staff and the community on how to quit. We know that this is a difficult addiction. It's not something easy to stop doing, so we want to make sure that there are supports available to people who would like to quit. And then, of course, following the implementation of the ordinance, we would continue to provide education and support in the community as well. And again, we're working real closely with Public Communications on that plan. And here are just some additional benefits to passing this ordinance. As you can see, it will increase staff productivity, lowers, it can potentially lower healthcare costs. People who smoke, of course, are at risk for heart disease and cancer, and certainly could impact property insurance and fires insurance as well, can reduce the amount of time that staff miss work, which of course increases productivity, and really reduces cleanup of the environment. So looking at Parks and Rec, it will reduce the issue there, and really creates that positive role modeling that we want for our youth in the community. And that's pretty much all that we have to present right now. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Rushen.
I've never seen anybody smoking in our buildings. Do they?
No, the current ordinance is for no smoking in, excuse me, smoking inside the building.
But if somebody wanted to wear a nicotine patch, they could or couldn't?
No, you could wear, you could use a nicotine patch.
Do people vape in our buildings?
No.
So there's no vaping and no smoking. The Ag Center, it wasn't on the list. What about the Ag Center?
Part of county property would be included.
So the Ag Center would be included for no smoking and no vaping, but somebody could chew tobacco, yes or no?
Tobacco, chewing tobacco.
You're saying just no tobacco period?
No, tobacco period.
They could chew gum. They could chew nicotine gum?
Yes.
They just can't chew tobacco?
Yes.
Any, okay, like it says lowers the healthcare costs for employees and potential lower fire and property insurance. Are we going to let them, like if an employee smokes and they choose to go outside and smoke, will that stop them from doing that? Would this stop them from doing that?
For grounds, yes, it would.
Oh, so we're talking about outside too?
Yeah, with the property inside and outside grounds. And it does not, we can't influence what people do in their own personal vehicles, excuse me, but it would be on the grounds and inside county buildings.
You know, I think about people who come to court. So out in the courtyard, they could or couldn't smoke out in front of the courtyard. So you've got somebody who smokes and they're addicted, and they come out and they, right now, they can or cannot smoke out in the courtyard.
The courtyard is actually a street right-of-way of record at this point, controlled by the city of Monroe, so that's outside the county's jurisdiction.
So at what point outside of this building could an employee go and smoke?
Right out in front of the building.
And after this ordinance, they could do the same thing?
Yes, because it wouldn't.
That's designated as a public right-of-way, as a street right-of-way.
But like right out the door here, just outside the door?
From the edge of the concrete, all, any area that's covered by brick pavers right up to the sidewalk or to the steps.
Okay. I have a few problems, and I hate smoke. God, I used to ride around with my mom and she smoked, and my grandmother and she smoked, and God, I hated it. I couldn't stand it. So, you know, when me and Amory met, she smoked, and we got her the patches and got her fixed, and she doesn't smoke anymore. So I'm right there with you. I can't stand for somebody to smoke around me. It gags me. But as far as like people chewing tobacco, I've never picked up anybody's drink cup and drank after them, so don't have any problem with that. But, you know, there's a lot of things here that, I don't know, I just have some issues with it. But maybe public hearing tonight, I can see some benefit to it, but I do have some issues with it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dennis. And there was nobody signed up to speak in informal comments on this public hearing, so.
There were two people who signed up smart as the public hearing.
I know that this is.
No one under the [inaudible].
Okay, I'm sorry. First one is Kim Beja. And let me say this, when you come to this podium, each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meeting, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Hello, my name is Kim Beja. I live at 204 Prairie Rose Court Waxaw in the Wesley Chapel area of Union County, and I'm here to speak in support of the tobacco-free county ordinance. I'm a public health professional who's worked in tobacco prevention for 20 years, worked for Union County Health Department for two years, Union County Schools for nine years, and I currently work for Mecklenburg County Public Health. However, the primary reason I'm here tonight is because I'm a 20-year resident of the Wesley Chapel area, the mother of two young adult sons who grew up in Union County Schools, and I care deeply about our local community and the health of our families that live in it. Our Union County Health Director is asking you to approve a tobacco-free ordinance for Union County-owned government property. I would like to state my unwavering support in favor of this action, which would provide multiple benefits to our community. It is well documented that when tobacco-free environments are put in place, there are significant outcomes. It supports people who currently use tobacco yet want to quit and are trying to quit, which is about 70% of current users. It eliminates dangerous exposure to secondhand smoke and e-cigarette aerosol, of which there is no safe level of exposure. It provides tobacco-free role modeling for our youth, which is critically important as we work to prevent youth addiction, and it can provide cost savings to employers, in this case, Union County Government, through improved employee health and cleaner grounds, including our parks. A fact that is very compelling is that one year after North Carolina enacted the Smoke-Free Restaurants and Bar Law, North Carolina saw a 21% reduction in average weekly visits to emergency rooms for heart attacks. The Smoke-Free Restaurants Law has been in place for 10 years now and is an example among many of how the norms have changed. People expect to be protected from tobacco smoke. This ordinance does not say that people can't ever use tobacco. It's about not using it in public spaces where it impacts others. We want Union County to be a healthy place with a local standard that promotes healthy living for all. You can demonstrate this value by voting for this tobacco-free ordinance. Thank you for your time and for your public service.
Thank you. Christopher Conway.
Thank you for a long, miss big. My name is Chris Conway. I live at 4017 Single Tree Lane Indian Trail. While I am a Union County Public School employee who works in support of our health and PE teachers, I am speaking to you today as a private citizen, as a 13-year resident of this county, and as a parent of two children who attend Union County Public Schools. I urge you to approve the Tobacco Use Ordinance that was brought to you today before our, by our Health Director. I can tell you this would look good public image-wise, but that's just not it. It's just simply the right thing to do. It will improve the immediate health of our public who use county facilities and property. People in Union County should not have to risk their health to go out to work or to visit a park or a city building. The ordinance will provide healthy role modeling for our community and our youth and keep children and teens away from tobacco. Considering nine out of 10 youth start using tobacco before the age of 18, I can think of no other reason why to have a tobacco-free policy. This ordinance does not prevent an adult from using tobacco if they so choose, but on their own time and away from the public, who have the right to not inhale secondhand smoke, which at any level is unhealthy. Our youth already have this benefit of being free from this at school fields and facilities. They should have the same luxury on county grounds. My hope is for the future that not only do you approve this ordinance, but other municipalities follow your lead and continue to make Union County the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your time and for your service.
Okay. Now, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor? Okay. We move on to staff recognition. Recognize the lifesaver award recipient.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor tonight to recognize one of our own Union County deputies being honored with the Union County Life Saving Award for his quick thinking and courageous acts to save lives during a vehicle pursuit as a suspect attempted to drive at high speeds into oncoming traffic on the Monroe Expressway on December 1st, 2021. Deputy John Miles was monitoring a chase while traveling down Unionville Indian Trail Road as the suspect exited the Monroe Expressway. Miles noticed the driver was attempting to cross over the bridge and re-enter oncoming traffic on the expressway. Fearing the driver's actions would kill others, Miles used his patrol vehicle to intentionally crash into the suspect's vehicle. Miles' quick thinking put himself in danger and serious injury resulted in stopping the suspect vehicle and ending the chase. It's not very often we get to honor an employee for wrecking their vehicle, but it was an incredibly brave action that quite possibly saved lives, and it's my honor to recognize Deputy Miles with the Life Saving Award. So if you please join me in welcoming Deputy Miles, presenting him with the Life Saving Award.
the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order by the chair and terminated by the chair of the board. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. First one I'm going to call up is Brian Hales.
Hey, good evening. My name is Brian Hales. I'm a proud lifelong resident of unincorporated Union County. Thanks for allowing me to speak again tonight. You know, the start of the new year normally brings renewed optimism that the current year is going to be better than the last. And while that may be the case for some, it's not the case for many children and parents of students in this county in the state of North Carolina. Why? Because we're in the same situation that we've been in since 2020, when compliance of the Strong Schools NC Toolkit was made law. As you know, this law allows NCDHHS to require anything that they deem necessary for the health and safety of our children in schools, whether it's effective or not. For months, concerned parents have addressed this board and others in our county regarding unconstitutional mask mandates. We have presented studies, personal experience, and statistics. However, you're mistaken if you believe that this effort is all about masks. Currently, we're just a few keystrokes away from a bureaucrat in Raleigh mandating things far worse. Test to stay, or what I like to call is prove you are healthy to go to school, has now been added as an exemption. And vaccines, which do not stop transmission, are heavily incentivized. To be clear, the toolkit has become nothing more than a weapon used to attack the liberties and rights of every student in the state of North Carolina. How long will we ignore this attack? On December 7th, 2021, this board, in collaboration with the Union County Board of Education, drafted and adopted a joint resolution in support of ending contact tracing and quarantine protocols in Union County Public Schools by tomorrow. Among many things, this resolution acknowledges the importance of in-person learning and the effect that unconstitutional COVID-19 protocols set forth by NCDHHS and the Strong Schools Toolkit have on our children, UCPS staff, parents in our county as a whole. You recognize that no healthy child should be prohibited from attending school. While I disagree with some of the language in the resolution, I commend this board, as well as our Board of Education, for your efforts. Yet, here we are, despite the fact that the new variant is less dangerous, the vaccine does not stop transmission, and cloth masks are not effective, the state has doubled down with new requirements. Today is January 18th, and tomorrow is the deadline. Our legislators in Raleigh have let us down when they compromised and allowed the toolkit to become session law in 2020. We are now at a point where we have no more room for compromise. Every member of this board signed that December 7th resolution. Will you now, when our kids need you the most, cower to the state? Will you now, when we need you the most, let us down? Or will you follow up your words with actions? Words without actions have no significance. When my children were born, I told them both I would protect them at all costs. That's why I'm here. You are the highest legislative body in this county. Follow through with the resolution and end contact tracing and quarantine in our schools. Protect the rights of our kids, and tell NCDHHS that Union County is done with their political warfare on our children. Today is the day for actions, not for words. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Richard Daunt.
Good evening. My name is Richard Daunt. I reside in the municipality of Waxaw, and I'm here to urge you to follow through on the joint resolution to end quarantines and contact tracing in our schools. As I've listened to the invocations at these meetings, I've noticed a common request, which is for wisdom. Allow me to share a definition of wisdom I want to spread, that it is a harmonization of facts and ideals. Those whose idealism excludes facts, or those whose fact-finding excludes a spiritual outlook, could be said to inhabit the barren extremes of philosophy. In our current situation, the ideal is that nobody will get sick, but the fact is, they will. As we work towards wisdom, I would like to thank you for the joint resolution. Once again, Union County is leading the way. Our Board of Education started the school year as one of less than five other school districts that went mask optional. Now there are 27. Courage is contagious. As a community, we all need to stand together and say no to policies that only serve to damage our children. Nonsensical health dictates have no place in a free society. Thomas Jefferson once said, "If people let government decide what foods they eat and what medicines they take, their bodies will soon be in a sorrier state as are the souls of those who live under tyranny." He also said, "Resistance to tyrants is obedience to God." Thank you, and may the Father's will be done in all things.
Thank you. Harold Schmanker.
Good evening. Harold Schmanker, now a resident of Waxaw. I want to talk about the vaccine policies here. It's important to remember that Pfizer has paid out over $10 billion in fines for false claims, bribing doctors, manipulating studies, as well as deaths due to its drugs. In the original Phase III trial report, Pfizer reported 95% efficacy. Eight out of 1,800 got COVID in the inoculated group, and 162 out of 18,000 in the placebo group. The 95% is the difference between 162 and eight. 1,600 suspected COVID cases were not tested in the inoculated group, and 1,800 in the placebo group were not tested. They only tested those with symptoms that investigator determined should be tested. Very different than the test everyone and test off and then what's going on today. If you include the suspected COVID cases, would have been only 19% efficacy, and they needed at least 50% to get emergency use approval. They reduced, in essence, they reduced a 0.88 chance of getting COVID to 0.04%, so a reduction of less of 1%. Trial was supposed to go three years, but after two months, they unblinded the study and offered the shot to the placebo group. Fast forward to the present, and the documents that the FDA wanted to wait 50 years to release was a report that there were over 1,200 deaths in the first two and a half months, and 25,000 nervous system adverse events. There was a reason they unblinded the study. There was a reason they unblinded the study. The endpoint of the study was reduction of positive cases. Why not reduction in illnesses and death? The study clearly shows an increase in illness and death, 20 inoculated deaths to 14 in the placebo group. 85% of COVID deaths are over 75 years old, but the Pfizer study had only 4% over 75. One of the 12-year-old, 12 to 15-year-old participants, Matty DeGray, has been in a wheelchair and fed by two for over 10 months. In the report, the FDA, Pfizer labeled it functional abdominal pain. The Pfizer 511 predictive modeling data acknowledges their inoculations will cause myocarditis. The table shows that for a million fully vaccinated 5 to 11-year-olds, the shot would prevent one death but cause 108 cases of myocarditis. We know that over six and a half years, there's a 20% mortality rate on that. So 22 deaths from myocarditis to presumably save one kid from dying from COVID. How is the Health Department recommending this shot to our children? Stop these shots. Launch an investigation to find out why they're encouraging shots for kids. And instead of a smoking ordinance, pass an ordinance that prohibits any employer from requiring testing, masks, or shots. Call it the Employee Medical Device Protection Act. Businesses are closing in Union County. We need to stop that, too. And a side note, a friend of mine looked at every single death certificate for 2020. The factual numbers of deaths from COVID in 2020 in Union County was 29. Less than one-third of what the Health Department is reporting. Average age was 74, the youngest was 41, with only five deaths under 60 years old. The real data does not fit the narrative from the Health Department. Why isn't the Health Department providing accurate information? Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Reed.
Good evening. I'm Maria Reed, and I'm a resident of Waxahaw, Union County. We are now in year three of the COVID state of emergency. This pandemic could have ended in 2020 if Fauci didn't fail to put early treatment protocols into place. Thousands of doctors around the globe have come up with proven, safe, and effective early treatments. The problem was those treatments were not profitable for Big Pharma and wouldn't allow them to have vaccines under emergency use authorization that gives them zero liability protection. 80% of all the COVID deaths wouldn't have happened if these early treatments were administered. In February 2020, Fauci said, "If you look at the masks that you buy in a drugstore, the leakage around that doesn't really do much to protect you." In March 2020, he also said that a mask's only real efficacy may be in making people feel a little better psychologically. A few months forward, then Fauci was telling everyone to double mask. In August 2021, CDC said that PCR tests were incapable of distinguishing COVID from other viral illnesses, and now they're pushing this test more than ever. COVID lockdowns caused 130 million Americans to fall into poverty and starvation, caused a 300% increase in teenage self-harm, anxiety, and depression, and put 58 million out of work. In 2020 alone, workers lost $3.7 trillion, while billionaires gained $3.9 trillion. This federal administration is guilty of all the COVID murders, COVID vaccine deaths and injuries, our broken economy and chaos. We are living in a bioweapon war where unvaccinated are discriminated and segregated against. We are attacked by big government, Big Pharma, big tech, big finance, and big media. They want us enslaved and dependent on them by taking vaccine after vaccine, booster after booster. They want to control and monitor our lives with vaccine passports to silence us, to feed us lies, and censor anyone who questions it. CDC is lying about COVID vaccine safety. These vaccines are killing at least 15 adults for every adult life they save. These vaccines are responsible for more deaths and injuries in one single year than all the other vaccines combined in the entire history of the world. There are by far more deaths from COVID vaccines than from COVID. How come the FDA needed only six months to review Pfizer's vaccine trials, but it requested 75 years to disclose these documents to the public? Blood-stained COVID federal funds are a trap into selling your constituents. Say no to tyrannical medical mandates, segregation, and discrimination. It's time we take our power back, and it starts with you, our local elected government. Thank you.
I saw that we had, I'm sorry, Deb Vance Helms.
You forgot about me.
I'm sorry.
You can't forget about me when I'm actually in a mood where I feel like a kid on Christmas Eve, because I really feel like tomorrow is Christmas. Deb Helms, unincorporated Union County, and with the expiration of the request to the state for the resolution tomorrow and the ending of the toolkit, I'm excited. This toolkit has been a nightmare for me. It has kept me awake at night, reading it, waking up every day. It had already changed three times in the first 11 days of 2022. It's ridiculous. It seems like Raleigh doesn't even know what they're doing, but the good thing is, I'm thankful for the unanimous vote from this board, in conjunction with the Board of Education and the Health Department, that we can move forward from this. I know Chairman Rake, your daughters are nurses at a couple of the schools. They know more than anybody how confusion this has been. They don't know, are kids supposed to be out of school five days, 10 days? It takes a few days for the notification. By the time they get notification, the quarantine period is already over. It has created a nightmare, and it has taken the focus away from our instructors in focusing on what they are there to do. When I got the opportunity last month to be the principal for a day at my child's school, when I saw the amount of administrative things that they are bogged down with, it blew my mind. They really, we need to find ways that the communities can start getting back into the school, help these teachers, help the staff. As a community, we need to help, because people are getting sick, they are calling out of work. It's flu season, it's cold season, there's a number of viruses going around. It's time that we accept COVID is one of those viruses that's going to circulate. We have all of the tools in our medical arsenal toolkit that we could need if you want to wear masks, get vaccines, get boosters, whatever your choice is. It's time for us to move forward, and I just want to end with excitement, because the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. So thank you for taking action, and please follow through with the resolution tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have December, January service awards and January retirements. Ashley Edwards, in the library, five years. Katrina Alexander, social services, five years. Tracy Wood, social services, five years. Melanie Underwood, human services, business ops, 10 years. Kay Udi, register of deeds, 10 years. Andrew Hogan, register of deeds, 10 years. Leslie Brett, sheriff's office, 15 years. Christina Fundebert, sheriff's office, 15 years. Joshua Carpenter, Public Works, 20 years. And the January Service Award recipients. Whitney Bolick, 9/11 communications, five years. Michael Mulligan, 9/11 communications, five years. Keosha Reynolds, community support and outreach, five years. Ashley Smith, community support and outreach, five years. Lisa Ortiz Frataselli, health, five years. Yolanda Williams, human services, business ops, five years. Christopher Privet, library, five years. Alicia Merriman, sheriff's office, five years. Cheyenne Miller, social services, five years. Rosa Perez, human services, business ops, 10 years. Sherry Presley, social services, 10 years. Thomas Kopage, sheriff's office, 15 years. Anthony Merrill, information technology, 20 years. Mark Lemon, tax administration, 20 years. And here's the happy part, January retirements. Brian Tony Wentz, facilities management, six years. Gail Horn, public health, 12 years. Victor Lynn Adcock, sheriff's office, 17 years. And Gloria Haney, community support and outreach, 21 years. I'd like to thank all these employees for the participation and service. All right, now we move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the end of the business agenda regarding a turnpike authority proposal to designate the Monroe Expressway as a scenic byway.
Okay. Have a motion to amend the agenda. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to take it off when we get to it. Okay. Under business, Series 2022 General Obligation Bond Issuances. And our CFO, Ms. Lyles, turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, and Manager. Today, I want to talk to you about our series proposed 2022 general obligation bond issuance and the capital projects that go along with this. Just some general information to begin with for educational purposes for the citizens and you all. General obligation bonds that are 2/3 capacity are calculated at 2/3 of the prior fiscal year's reduction of your general obligation bond debt. So for Union County, what this means, in FY21, we paid off around $30 million in general obligation bond debt principal paydown. So the 2/3 calculation of that for Union County is $20,590,000. That's the maximum allowance for general obligation bonds in the 2/3 capacity that we could actually issue for non-voting bonds. General obligation bonds that are 2/3 must also be issued in a fiscal year following a year that no new general obligation debt was issued. So if we had issued debt in fiscal year 21 that was general obligation bond related, we would not be able to utilize the 2/3 bond capacity as a financial resource for our CIP plan. 2/3 bonds do not require voter approval, and the reason for that is you're actually utilizing previously approved bonds, as you've paid them down, to utilize this capacity as allowed by state law. Normally, issuing 2/3 bonds does not require tax increase. And again, the reason for that is you already have the tax rate associated with the previous debt paid off to reach this capacity. It will be included in your manager's recommended budget for the upcoming budget season for FY23. 2/3 general obligation bonds is a financing resource tool that we use when we put multi-year capital improvement plans together. These are normally included in your adopted capital project ordinances that are presented to you during the budget cycle, or when we're working on long-term capital plans outside of that. For an example, when we did the long-term educational capital plan, we looked at this as a funding source for some of those projects, and we'll talk about those here shortly. The bond orders for all bonds, not just 2/3 bonds, are adopted by your project function type. So what that means is if you have education bonds included in a bond issuance with parks and recreation bonds, you actually have to adopt two separate bond orders. And public hearings are always required for any bond issuance that the county does, as well as these 2/3 general obligation bonds. Funding can only be spent on the bond orders as they are adopted by the project type. So if you recall, back in July, when staff and management recommended the county CIP plan for fiscal year '22, we included some major capital projects for county government needs. These projects are listed in front of you. All are in blue, indicate that these are in the design phase. The one in green indicates that it is in construction. The only exception to a project that was not included in the CIP adopted in July was additional funding for the Southwest Regional Library for FFNE. In order to utilize the additional maximum capacity that we have for 2/3 bonds, staff and management is recommending that we utilize that as a source for funding to finalize that project. So laid out before you tonight here is the county facility projects by bond order type. So you have a separate bond order for each type of project that we're asking to utilize 2/3 bonds as a funding source. For your general government bonds, the bond order is for $3,750,000. That includes the projects for the government center and judicial center building and envelope repairs, the historic courthouse Phase II renovations, as well as renovations to the Union County Progress Building. The public safety law enforcement bond order that you have is for $4,070,000. This is for the Patton Avenue Radio Shop renovation project, the jail lock project enhancement at the Union County Jail, also replacing three commercial washers and dryer at the jail, as well as the jail block renovation cost. For parks and recreation, you have a bond order totaling $1.9 million. This is for the Kane Creek Park Camp Store, Jesse Hams Park amenity improvements, as well as the event center at Jesse Hams Park Support Building. For the library, you have a bond order before you for $778,000. This is to replace the metal architectural roofing panels at our main library, as well as $210,000 for the Southwest Union Regional Library FFNE. In addition to that, for our educational needs, if you recall, we had a long-term educational committee that presented to you last spring some immediate priorities for South Piedmont Community College. These two projects were on the top of their priority list, and as part of our capital planning strategy, we wanted to utilize 2/3 bonds capacity for these two projects as well. The first is access controls. This was listed as a major priority for them to secure their building with some security controls that they currently do not have in place. They're expected to receive bids for this project in March and complete it within calendar year 2022. In addition to the access controls, they needed additional funding for Building A renovations. If you recall, Building A renovation was part of a voter-approved bond in 2016. This is additional funding that they need to be able to finalize the renovation costs for those projects. And Michelle Brock is here tonight also, if you had any questions related directly to South Piedmont. The total bond order for South Piedmont Community College projects is $5,192,000. In addition to other educational needs, part of what came out of the long-term educational recommendation as well was for design work for Far Steels High School and East Elementary for Union County Public Schools. That was approved by you as a board back in April of last year in the springtime. At that time, you approved an interfund loan from the general fund to the school CIP fund as a temporary funding source for this design work to begin until we were able to issue the 2/3 general obligation bonds for a funding source. They have began that design work in November of 2021, and we are actively paying bills for that already. So what are our next steps in the bond issuance? Tonight, we are introducing the bond orders to you, as well as asking you to adopt a resolution, allowing the clerk to call for the public hearing on the bonds on February the 7th. At that meeting, following the public hearing, we will ask you to actually adopt the bond orders and the resolutions to submit to the LGC for approval. The week of February the 14th, we plan to hold conference calls with the credit rating agencies and to present our bond request to them as well. March 1st is the Local Government Commission Board meeting. We will be seeking their approval at that time. On March the 22nd would be the competitive market bid sale conducted by the Local Government Commission on our behalf, and on April the 7th, we would close on the bonds. In addition to our next steps in our capital planning process, is you as a board, you ask questions regularly about where are we at with our capital projects going forward. We plan to bring to you a quarterly update on all county capital projects and the status of those projects, if they're in design or construction, what we've spent to date and what is remaining for those projects. In addition to that, as you're aware, we're calling for additional board workshops. A joint education workshop is being requested now. We are also working with our Solid Waste Stat currently to do a rate study for Solid Waste to bring forward their future CIP needs going forward. And as you are aware, the county is still conducting the facility space needs study that will be brought to you as well. Those are our next steps in our capital planning process, and I'll be glad to take any questions you have regarding this particular bond or any projects. you have regarding this particular bond or any projects.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to recap, the reason this general obligation debt doesn't have to get approved by the voters is because we have seen a net reduction of principal that was owed in the last year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And under statute, we're allowed to issue up to two-thirds of what that net reduction was in the last year.
That is correct.
And our interest rate environment in terms of issuing the debt, is it an extremely attractive interest rate environment or not?
It is. We are estimating right now with market conditions, a true interest cost on this would be 1.95%, which is very low. And not knowing where the market is going, we're expecting these interest rates to increase over time. So we really need to go ahead and move forward with this bond issuance to lock in at the low rates. And with two-thirds bond capacity as well, you need to close that bond before you reach June 30th, because then your calculation would start over.
So in other words, it's a very good time to go ahead and act on these bond orders?
That's right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Union, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed bond issues, and approve the clerk to the board to call for a public hearing of the proposed bond issues for February 7th, 2022.
We have a motion. Any discussion? Okay.
I also need to ask that you read each one of the bond orders that we're asking you to introduce tonight as well.
Do you want to add that to your? Let's see, do I have it here?
It's listed in the.
Right here.
Okay, thank you. Introduce, to introduce the following bond orders. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $4,070,000 of general obligation law enforcement bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $778,000 general obligation library bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $1,900,000 general obligation parks and recreation bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $3,750,000 general obligation public building bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $5,192,000 general obligation community college bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Bond order authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $4,900,000 general obligation school bonds of the County of Union, North Carolina. Adopt a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed bond issues, and approve the clerk to the board to call for a public hearing on the proposed bond issues for February 7th, 2022. In case you didn't catch me saying that the first time.
Okay, so we have a motion. Very well spelled out. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I didn't hear you, Stony, I'm sorry. Okay, moving forward. Mr. Jensen. Union County 2050 implementation strategy coordinating rezonings and funded road projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. If you'll recall, back last, in the last summer, I believe, we had a public hearing and adoption of the majority of the land use plan and the majority of the strategies contained in the 2050 comprehensive plan. There was one that the board wanted staff to go back and revisit, and it involves this, the rezonings and road improvements. During the development of the 2050 plan, lots of the committees and the coordinating committee looked at this, and as you're well aware, there are lots of roads in the county that are slated for some type of improvement, whether that's to relieve congestion or to make safety improvements, improvements or both. But because of funding issues at the state level, a lot of those improvements have been pushed back, in some cases indefinitely. We just don't know when, when those improvements will be made. In light of that, the coordinating committee said, well, maybe we shouldn't approve rezonings on a lot of these corridors. Maybe, you know, if they want to develop, they should develop based on what the current zoning is and let's don't increase densities. And I think for the most part, thinking about residential-type developments. So the coordinating committee came up with this statement. This is the one that you saw back in late summer, mainly what I just said, you're tying rezoning, really denials, you're denying rezonings because of traffic issues on roads that, you know, for some reason or another, funding shortfalls won't be improved for a while. During the, some of the discussion, during the public hearing and subsequent adoption, some comments came forward about, well, what if there's a project that because of its maybe transformative nature, would be something that, that would be approved regardless of the, of the transportation improvements? And you ask staff to go back and, and take a look at that. So we worked with, with legal, and we've come up with some new language that we think does that. And the issue, again, is still the same. You still have lots of roads that need to be improved. The funding doesn't exist or it's been pushed back, so those improvements are delayed. The strategy in this case would be that the first thing we would do is maybe the developer could look at contributing funds to help accelerate the schedule for that project. And in lieu of mitigating those impacts, if the developer couldn't do that or chose not to, if, if that project was, was transformative to the community in some way, then that may be a project that the board may want to approve. But if it wasn't transformative and the developer didn't want to contribute funds to help accelerate that project, it would still be one that at least staff would recommend to deny. And that's kind of how we get into the how. We would still do what we always do and evaluate the traffic impacts for those rezonings, determine if the project will increase traffic during those AM and PM peak periods. And if it did, then we would seek to see if there was a way that they could contribute funds to help improve the project. But it does have some language in there about transformative projects, and if that was something that was somehow changing the community in a way that was good, that that would be something that would be considered as well. So we've, it's taken us a while to come up with some language, but I think, appreciate Jason's office working with us over in legal. They really knocked it out of the park. We came up with some language that we think will, is what you are looking for. I'll be happy to answer any questions about this. Ultimately, what we're looking for is to approve this strategy. That will update the comp plan, or you could deny the strategy and comp plan will stay like it is today, or we could send us back to the drawing board.
Questions, gentlemen? Commissioner Hayes.
Yeah, you made a reference to municipalities or the county contributing funds to make a project happen that the state had a shortage of funds.
Yes.
My question is this, is every single project that they do have that requirement? Or are they very selective on who they can build funds from?
Usually what can happen if a county or municipality contributes funds to a project, it may help it score better, it may help that project move along the process a little bit faster. That's generally what, what contributing funds.
That's not what I asked, Lee.
I'm sorry.
Does all projects have that? Now, I understand that you give more money, you move up the ladder. But do all projects have the requirement that, you know, we've got several major projects here in the county that, you know, even when the county or the municipality put up funds, they still didn't do?
Right. It's not a requirement that, that a county or a town contribute funds. So no, it's not a, it's not a requirement. So not all projects have that.
Okay.
But you do bring up a good point that I failed to mention in this, is that we would, if this was adopted, we would also reach out to other municipalities to have them, to see if they would be willing to consider adopting a similar strategy in their jurisdictions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rushen.
You know, with that said, like if the municipalities, especially with so many municipalities in Union County, so let's say that one municipality agreed to it, but another didn't, what kind of effect did that have? For example, let's say Weddington agreed and did their part, but then another, like let's say Waxall didn't agree or whatever, did their rezonings and all that traffic still flows through Weddington. How does it not work as an all-inclusive, all-county, completely municipalities, county, everybody approach?
Sure. Well, if you take 16, for example, and that is a project that has some, some improvements that are delayed, that goes through four different jurisdictions. There's Weddington, unincorporated Union County, a little bit of Marvin, and Waxall. So you're right, ultimately, you would want all those towns and the county that, or all the jurisdictions that that road goes through to adopt a similar policy. If, if one town didn't, it's not a, it's not the end of the world. We would like to see all the towns do it, but obviously, if one town didn't and approved a bunch of houses or some project that, that contributed to a lot of traffic on the road, then you still, you're adding to the problem, and that's what this strategy is trying to prevent, is trying to not add traffic, not make the problem worse than it already is today. So yes, we would ultimately want all the towns to participate. If they didn't, you know, we can't force them to, but by them approving rezonings that added traffic, it would tend to make the problem worse.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we'll go on to the Union County Community Development Block Grant, CBD, CDBG. Clayton, I believe you're going to present that.
Yes, sir. Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and Manager Watson. I'm going to be presenting some information about the Union County Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG. If you have any questions at any time, please feel free to stop me, and I'll try to answer those. This is just a quick look at the things I'm going to go over. The first is an overview of the federal CDBG program, and then I'll go over how it operates in Union County, and then some of the current program activities that are occurring and some potential next steps. Before I get into it, I should mention that CDBG is an extensive federal program with lots of federal regulations and administrative guidance. And so I'm not going to be getting into all the details of the restrictions and requirements, but I just want to give you notice of that, and I'm just going to be covering the broad points and trying to give you what I think is going to be beneficial to everyone's understanding. So as I mentioned, the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, it's managed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, since 1974. It provides annual grants on a formula basis to states, cities and counties, and the purpose of the program is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons, or LMI. And I emphasize some of this language because, some of that, sorry. Because there are a wide range of CDBG program activities that can be funded with these, but ultimately, this should be advancing this purpose. There are several types of CDBG programs. The first and most notable is the entitlement program, and this is where HUD awards entitlement communities funds to fund community development activities such as neighborhood revitalization, economic development, and improvements to public facilities and other improvements. And approximately 70% of annual CDBG funding that's appropriated by Congress goes to this program. And you have to meet three, one of the three criteria, and that's, the first is being a principal city of a metropolitan statistical area, or another metropolitan city of 50,000 population or more, and qualified, or a qualified urban county of 200,000 or more, and Union County is a qualified urban county. The second type is the state CDBG program, and so the remaining annual CDBG funding goes towards the state CDBG program. And so this gives the state's opportunity to award funds to non-entitlement areas, and those non-entitlement areas would be your general local units of government that don't meet one of these three criteria. Cities within an urban, qualifying urban county can participate with the county, and I'll talk a little bit about that more when we get into the specifics of Union County. But in the next is sort of the specialty programs. CDBG DR is a disaster recovery, and that is, in 1992, Congress started appropriating funds for long-term disaster recovery for states and communities that are hit hardest by qualifying federal disasters. And then more recently, they have funded mitigation activities, which creates long-term, which supposedly creates long-term resiliency in states and communities that have been hit hardest by qualifying federal disasters. And I should mention, these specialty programs typically are not funded annually. They come with specific appropriations, and so those are done annually.
Clayton, can I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
Not to put you on the spot, but under that specialty, does anything come to your mind of things that would qualify in our county?
Well, the next one, the CDBG CV, the coronavirus funds, we did receive two rounds of funding of that in 2020. That was through the CARES Act appropriation. Again, that was done on like a formula basis.
So that money actually came to us through CDBG?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But in order to receive some of those other funds, we'd have to be impacted by a qualifying federal disaster. This is the annual CDBG allocation process that states and entitlement communities are subject to. I'm not going to get into all the details of these different bullet points, but suffice to say that all of these steps affect the timing and the amount of funds that Union County receives, so when and how much we receive. So for example, if the president signs the appropriation bill after October 1st, then that will delay sort of when we are notified of our funding and when we are able to receive that funding. This is the second part of that allocation process, the formula. And so there are two formulas that HUD uses. There's a lot of weighting factors and criteria, but, but the main point is that for Formula A, it's heavily weighted for the percent of people in poverty, and Formula B is heavily weighted for the percent of pre-1940 housing units. And HUD uses the larger of the two formulas to fund communities, but what that ends up doing is creating an appropriation or an allocation that's above their appropriation. So then they prorate it based on that funding cap. There are many restrictions to using CDBG funds. I'm just going to highlight some of the major ones. The first is that it must meet a national objective, and there are three national objectives, providing a benefit to low and moderate income persons, or LMI. And an LMI person is an individual or household that is anywhere from 0 to 80% of the area median income, and the next slide shows a table of. of the area benefiting income, and the next slide shows a table of that. The second one is preventing or eliminating slums and blight, and the third one is where there is an urgent community development need, and there are conditions that threaten the health or welfare of the community, and no other funds are available. The second restriction is that it must be an eligible activity, and this is not an exhaustive list, but this kind of gives you a flavor of what, you know, the different activities you can carry out. So, the first is, you know, you can acquire real property, you can relocate individuals or households, you can demolish or rehab structures, construct public facilities, provide public services, create renewable energy resources, or create jobs. This is the table I was referring to. These are the 2021 income limits. Union County is part of the Charlotte Concorde Gastonia MSA, and that's the median family income of eighty-four thousand two hundred. The main thing to focus on here is that right column, and that's typically what we think of as low to moderate income. So, a household of four earning under sixty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty would qualify as LMI. In addition to being an eligible activity, it must also not be an ineligible activity. And again, this is an exhaustive list, but these are some of the things you can't use CDBG funding for, acquiring, construction, or rehabbing buildings for the general conduct of government, political activities, income payments, and construction of new housing. And we must manage the pot of funding in such a way that we serve eligible beneficiaries. So, that means that not less than seventy percent of CDBG funds must be used for activities that benefit LMI persons. So, you can see, that's sort of the overriding factor when a sub-recipient applies for funds. Typically, we're going to be using that LMI national objective to qualify that program. So, how do you determine whether or not it meets an LMI national objective? There are four beneficiary types. The first and most easiest is the area benefit, because it's based on census data, and it's where a project is located in an area where fifty-one percent of the residents are LMI. And that's the one that predominantly Union County has used to qualify projects. The other three, I'm not going to get into, but basically, an individual would have to provide certain documentation to verify their income to be eligible or to qualify an activity under LMI. There are four major CDBG program components. The first is a five-year consolidated plan. That's a strategic plan where the community sets forth objectives that they want to accomplish over that time period. It includes a citizen participation plan, which encourages participation among LMI persons in the community, as well as other vulnerable populations. And then, it also includes the first year of the annual action plan, where you are, you're setting your funding allocations for various activities that you plan to accomplish. Then in years two through five, we submit additional annual action plans, and those, again, those will look at the objectives you're trying to achieve over that five-year period and funding activities towards that. Then, we also submit an annual performance report every year that measures our progress towards achieving those objectives, and every five years, we conduct an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, which basically is looking at what are the impediments in the community towards us providing fair housing to federally protected classes. I know that's a lot of information about the federal program, but I'm going to talk now about, kind of switch gears and talk about the CDBG program in Union County. These are some of the key milestones that show how the program has evolved over the years. So, in 2009, we applied for and received an infrastructure grant through the state CDBG program, and as a result of that, we had to, we had to complete an analysis of impediments. So, that was completed in 2012. In 2015, we gained entitlement status because we met that criteria of over two hundred thousand. And then in 2016, we completed our first consolidated plan and received our first annual allocation. And at that time, six municipalities elected to participate along with us, and that would be Marshville, Monroe, Stallings, Waxall, Weddington, and Wingate. And what that means is that each of them signed an agreement with the county, and it covers a three-year qualification period and renews every three years automatically unless they choose to opt out. And there are three things in that agreement, three major things that are stipulated, and the first is that they won't apply for CDBG, state CDBG funding, that Union County has the primary responsibility for conducting the planning and administration of the program, and the third thing is that the, Union County has the final responsibility for selecting the projects that we're going to fund. So, what would happen if they chose to opt out? There's some information on the Commerce Department website, which runs the state CDBG program, about community housing grants, such as the neighborhood stabilization and neighborhood revitalization. And according to their website, these, any municipality in an entitlement urban county would not be eligible to receive those grants, regardless of whether or not they're participating. So, there are some restrictions on what they can apply for, based on information that's publicly available. They could apply for a public infrastructure grant, but we don't have clarity on what those eligibility factors are. So, I've reached out to the state and tried to get some clarity on that, and anything we give, we can provide that information to you. In 2017, we completed the second. Yes, sir.
Yeah, if I can just ask, so if I understand correctly, if you're participating as a town in the consolidated plan and the allocation, your opportunities for eligibility are greater? In some cases, or?
It depends. Like I said, we don't really have enough information about what the state program offers, but it is the easiest way to participate and to potentially be allocated funds as a sub-recipient.
Is Indian Trail still absent from this?
I'm going to touch on that in a minute, but yeah, you'll see that in a minute. In 2017, we completed our second analysis of impediments. In 2020, we received those two rounds of CDBG CV funds, and in 2021, we just completed our second consolidated plan. This is a snapshot of the annual entitlement funding. As you can see, it's increased pretty much every year, and that's based on population. That's that population factor. So, those municipalities, their populations count towards our population total when they're conducting their formula. And you can see, that's the total amount we received from CDBG CV funds, a little over a million dollars.
Clayton, go back to that just a minute. In 2020, did we receive a total of those two amounts?
Yes, sir.
What triggered the getting both of them?
That's that specialty-type program, that CDBG CV funding, in addition to what we received from the entitlement program. So, those two pots of funds, we received monies from those.
The CV one is coronavirus, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, those were funds appropriated through the CARES Act to prevent, prepare, and respond for coronavirus. This is our local CDBG program cycle. Our program year, this varies by community, but our program year runs from July 1st to June 30th, which means at the end of February, HUD will communicate an annual allocation to us, and by May 1st, we have to meet a prior-year timeliness requirement. What that basically means is, you know, our balance remaining in our line of credit must be no more than one and a half times the annual allocation. So, if we're receiving about a million dollars on May 1st, we can't have any unspent, unallocated funds greater than a million and a half. And by May 15th, we'll submit our annual action plan. Forty-five days later, we hope that HUD approves our annual action plan and we sign a grant agreement, and then by September 30th, we're submitting our annual performance report. Some of our local CDBG program components here in Union County, since we became an entitlement community, we've used Central Island Regional Council for our planning and administration, and with their assistance, we set up a formal application process that we use to select projects and sub-recipients. And then, these are some of the things we ask in that formal application process, a detailed project description, a summary of the community need, the type of eligible activity, whether or not it's public services or public infrastructure. And this is where they would generally select whether or not they are using that area benefit, that area LMI benefit. Proposed outcomes, what are results, work plan, timeline, and milestones, you know, what do you plan to accomplish by when, what's your staffing capacity, and what's your budget? What do you plan to allocate towards the project? So, it's a detailed list of things that we ask through that application process. Earlier, I referred to that area benefit in Union County. This is what it looks like. So, we have a total of forty-one census tracts and a hundred and three census block groups, and so, about twenty-five percent, roughly a quarter, are LMI census block groups, meaning that's where that area benefit would qualify a project. This is just a basic map of the LMI census block groups, and just to give you a sense of geographically, so they're pretty contiguous, along seventy-four, running across the entire county. You've got pockets in Hemby Bridge, Fairview, Mineral Springs, west of the airport, and up 205 to New Salem, and just west of 601 as you're coming into Union County. This chart just shows the total allocation by eligible activity, and this is for the entirety of the program over the last five years. We've spent roughly two-thirds on public facilities and improvements, a quarter on public services, and about eleven percent on planning and administrative activities. So, you can see, the majority of the funding has gone to public facilities and improvements and public services, and there's just a wide range of activities you could be using the CDBG funds for. If you're, I didn't go over this earlier, but there's that twenty percent cap on planning and administration. We're under that significantly. You might be wondering why we're over the cap on public services, which is fifteen percent, and that's because the CARES Act waived that requirement. So, all of that funding went to public services. These are some of the major projects that we've completed over the course of the program. You can see the different areas where projects have gone, and the funding amounts that were allocated, and the various sub-recipients. And I would like to ask our Assistant County Manager, Patrick Nalland, to kind of come up and talk about his experience as a former town manager with being a sub-recipient and be able to answer some of these, any questions you have about some of these projects.
Thank you, Clayton. Prior to coming to the county, I was the town manager in Wingate for eight years, and prior to Clayton coming to the county, I ran the CDBG program for the county, so I have a perspective on both sides. Wingate is one of three municipal, four municipal providers in the county that still has their own water and sewer system, Marshville, Monroe, and the county being the other three. So, what we looked at CDBG for was really for that public facilities. We had a small system that was in pretty bad shape, like a lot of small systems in North Carolina. We had old terracotta sewer lines, we had old galvanized two-inch water lines that were rusting from the inside out, and the sewer line was just leaking, causing massive INI issues. So, the board at the time took some pretty dramatic steps to replacing almost the entire system in Wingate. We had major water line repairs, major sewer line repairs through a variety of funding sources, Clean Water Management Trust Fund, USDA, the Rural Center, the State Revolving Fund, and then toward the end of my tenure there, CDBG. We were one of the early adopters of the CDBG program in Wingate because we saw the value of it. We didn't get a lot of money, but what we used it as is for some of these smaller projects in some of our more needy neighborhoods to where we can do small water line projects, small sidewalk projects. What we also did was put our own money towards some of the engineering and design to put us in a better position to get funding through the CDBG program. There's some state law that prevents you from using the same engineer that did the design to do the construction. So, the town would fund the design work and then ask for construction dollars from CDBG, and it worked fairly well because we were basically applying with a shovel-ready project for the county. Small town, small customer base, so what it also allowed us to do was prevent higher rate increases to the citizens. We still had significant rate increases, but they weren't as high as they would have been if we didn't get the grant funding. I would say the biggest benefit we probably saw was working with the county in Wingate is the administration of it. There's a lot of red tape with this program, and if you go at it alone as a municipality, there's a lot of liability on you to get it done right, and that's kind of what the county takes over for some of these smaller municipalities. The relationship with the COG and the work that Clayton does, there's a lot of boxes that have to be checked, a lot of documentation that has to be done, and with the county involved, ultimately, it's the county's responsibility to make sure that's all done. So, we, as the town, were a participant, but we also had that backstop of the professionals at the county and the COG to make sure we were doing it right. So, that's just a little perspective from the municipal side, and I can answer any questions you all have about that, and if not, I'll let Clayton continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. These are just some of the current program activities that are going on. Our public services projects are underway, projects like our senior nutrition and the community shelter that we're funding. We're also doing a consolidated plan amendment, and this is what you're referring to. We're adding four additional municipalities, Fairview, Indian Trail, Mineral Springs, and Wesley Chapel with this amendment, hopefully bringing this back to you at your next meeting. And we're also reallocating funds from the Jesse Holmes Park Project to some wastewater infiltration reduction projects in Wingate and Marshville. And we're currently in the middle of our third analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. That'll be coming back before you in the spring as well. We've set up an advisory committee of our municipal representatives. We've computed, we've completed a community survey with about a thousand responses, and we've conducted some focus groups as well. So, just some next steps. It's been, you know, over five years since the program's inception, and it's probably a good time to evaluate the current program, the structure and the staffing, how we're selecting projects, and our strategic focus, because as you could see, we're funding some limited activities, and we could be potentially exploring funding other activities that are eligible under CDBG. And so, at some point, we'll bring back some options for you to consider and some recommendations. And with that, if you have any other questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions? Clayton, you have just scratched my curiosity, and it'll be another time. This just seems like a whole government in itself that I know nothing about.
It's a lot of information, for sure, to unpack.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, wastewater treatment capacity, our monthly update.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Typically, what you have in your agenda is just a report that's in your agenda. We don't really get up here and always give you a verbal presentation, but I thought it was important that we bring this back to you in more of a discussion and presentation to sort of set the stage for some future decisions and direction that we're going to need from the board. First off, we're doing well as far as our capacity. When I say well, we're doing fine as far as our capacity currently with our plants. We do have some capacity available for Twelve Mile Creek and Crooked Creek, but again, it's limited, as we all know it is. Each month, we've been able to gain a little bit of capacity because the INI issues are reducing, our rainfall totals have gone down, the average monthly totals have managed to shift, so we're gaining a little bit of capacity, especially at Twelve Mile Creek every month, which has helped us with a lot of the projects that wanted to move forward. The board did allow for us to permit projects beyond that ninety-five percent that we'd capped that we'd set previously, and we've been able to stay in the ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent range, and that's where we are today, about ninety-seven and a half percent at the Twelve Mile Creek. Crooked Creek is in much better position, it's at seventy-eight percent. But the point I want to make, and you've got a table there that talks about the backlog, is that the amount of capacity that we currently have, as well as what we're going to expand for Twelve Mile Creek, an additional one and a half million gallons will be coming, that capacity's not going to last that long. It's going to take us roughly three more years to get that expansion online before we get that expansion online. Before we get that expansion online, as you can see, we have roughly 1.2 million gallons of flow that is being considered for at least the Twelve Mile Creek plant. We don't have that much flow in that plant right now. And the hope is, of course, that by the time the expansion is completed, that we will have enough capacity to be able to accommodate that. But that will consume a large amount of that additional expansion. Also, with Crooked Creek, there is a limited amount of capacity. It's a small plant, 1.9 million gallons. And we currently don't have a plan for expansion for that plant. The board hasn't given us direction for expansion of that plant or for capacity in that area. Obviously, we've been exploring options, but we don't have an official plan. Because of that, the state is ultimately going to have a point at which they say you can't really permit anymore in that area. We use ninety percent as a rule, so my guess is you've got about 230,000 gallons worth of flow that you're going to be able to permit for that particular facility, and then we'll have to stop. Because we don't have a plan for how to expand that and what we're going to do with that. So in the upcoming months, we're going to be coming to you with some direction and some decisions that we're going to need on future expansion, even beyond nine million gallons for Twelve Mile Creek. And what do you do for the area that serves Crooked Creek? And that's why I'm here, just to sort of put this out there for you, make sure that you know that these are things that are coming. Obviously, there are impacts to your system, whatever decision you make. But ultimately, it is a system, if you want it to grow, we've got to have capacity. Board has also given us direction on coming up with an allocation policy for our municipalities. It's hard for us to have an allocation policy if we don't have capacity to allocate. So again, those things that I just want you to think about. Roughly April, I believe, will be coming to you, will have some of these things for you to give us some direction on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I just wanted to sort of set the stage for some future decisions that you're going to have to make.
Commissioner Rush.
Yes, sir.
Brian, what's the gallon per day figure on a house? What's the state average? Is it 280 or 300?
I think it's 280. I think ours is 280. The state has a different rule that applies, I believe, to jurisdictions that haven't established an official rate for their area. We submitted documentation to show that our average is about 280. And so that's what we use, whereas I believe it's 360 for the state, if I'm not mistaken.
So that, looking at that, the Twelve Mile Creek plant is pit-flowing today at 5.7 million gallons?
Roughly, I think last month was total, that the actual was 5.6. Remember, say, rolling twelve-month average.
Right, so, but, you know, roughly five, six, five, seven.
Between five and 5.8 is where we normally run, as far as that goes.
And that plant's 7.5 million gallons, that plant. And that, just by that number, that's 5,700 homes.
If you were to break it up that way, I don't have, haven't done the math, but that sounds reasonable.
So that's 5,700 homes that have yet to be built. That's the pending. And then...
Again, I want to stress that that could be some commercial projects, it's not all residential, but it could be.
Could be 5,700 homes.
Yes, sir.
And then we're expanding to another 5,700 homes after that, that we've already in the works of permitting that for the other nine million for another 1.5 million gallons.
If you were to break it up that way, it could conceivably be that.
Because that's important to know. I mean, it's important when people see new subdivisions going in that they understand, you know, some of the ones that we've approved, and some of the ones that have been approved in towns, they're not even in this list. They're above the 5,700 homes that are pending. We have some on the books.
What you have is what's been submitted to us. So if it hasn't been submitted to us, we don't know about it. So if it's been submitted and it's in our process, then that's what those numbers are based on, what's been submitted to us.
Last year about this time, and I guess the February numbers will be interesting because that's when the high rainfall month was, last time was February.
December, January, and February were three highest month, and I believe February was the highest, if I'm not mistaken.
So these numbers could possibly go down even some more.
It could drop, yes, sir.
And we're able to build, so we're able to build, we've stopped at these numbers. But the plant will actually clean, was it 15 million gallons a day right now?
So it actually will only go about 12 million gallons, even though it's supposed to have a two and a half times. There is a engineering restraint on it, so it really only does about 12 million.
But we're not dumping in the creek.
No, sir, we're not.
Right, and we're fixing those inflow problems.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, something that was interesting in the last program, you were talking, Patrick was talking about how Wingate had the old pipes and the inflow and the problems, and money came along to help fix that. The money that ratepayers pay today, someday in the future, may have to go in to fix pipes, right?
Certainly.
Yeah, and if we start getting way too ahead of ourselves, you know, we had a conversation a little bit earlier, the manager and I, the chairman, we're talking about some of the issues about going on, how many projects are going on at one time. So, you know, be mindful, you know, as we're looking at this, that this is a lot of money, and we can't charge builders upfront for these funds, and they're really not covering the cost even when it comes in. The cost to the house is a subsidy to the numbers that we have to put in there as ratepayers. So again, it's better than it looked, and I'm really going to be interested in seeing after that February comes off next month from last year, what it's going to look like then.
You'll get the, you'll get the February will be shown in the March, March ones. It's usually the month following, so you've got Decembers this month, you'll get Januaries and February, and then March, you'll get February's.
Good, so, and like I said, it's a, we're using less than six million gallons a day, actually using less than six million gallons a day. So we've got a million and a half gallons to work with, and then another potential million and a half gallons to work with. So about three million gallons potential to work with of houses that haven't been built yet.
I won't say that's 100% accurate, but I know where your math is. I know where your math is, yes, sir.
It's pretty close, right? Okay, so about 11,000 houses.
You've got some, you've got some wiggle room in there, absolutely.
Yeah, I fudged on the low side, so 10 commercial projects maybe will do. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other comments? Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Matthews, I think you said with some of the adjustments, we're in the 98% range?
Ninety-seven to 98.
And that's how many gallons left that you've got to play with?
That's under 500,000 gallons currently. That's everything that is in the hopper. So that means anything that's permitted and anything that's in review. Now, not all of those projects will move forward, and new projects will be added. That happens daily. So a project may move from a sketch phase into full plan review. Sometimes a sketch project may go away, they just decide they're not going to do it. But we typically, as a rule of thumb, about eighty to ninety percent of these projects will move forward in some fashion. They may change, they may reduce some of their flow, they may change and add some additional flow. But most of the time, you'll see between eighty and ninety percent of these projects will actually move forward. There will be that 10 to 20 percent that drop out. We never know which ones there's going to be, but then you'll also have some that get added.
But I guess where I'm going is a major development could consume that last two, two and a half percent. Got a fair statement?
Well, certainly, well, if you look at, if you look at our backlog, if every one of those projects were to be approved, we couldn't approve them all. We don't have enough flow to approve them all. I'm not going to say that all of those will get approved, and they certainly aren't all going to get approved at the same time. They're in various stages of review. But it is certainly possible that you could have all of those projects move through the review process before the expansion is completed. That is very possible. And that's one of the reasons why we're telling the board that these things are out there. I don't want you to say later on, why didn't someone tell me that this was a possibility? We're telling you that, again, we've got a number of projects all in the review cycle. It is, it is very possible that we run out of capacity by the time the expansion is completed and these projects move through the permitting process.
And if I recall, back in the early 2000s, we got to the point where we had to shut down because we didn't consider what we're considering today. So it's prudent for us to be cautious as we look at new projects and what's, where it's going, right?
It is certainly prudent. And as the board has asked us to do, is to come up with some way to involve the municipalities as far as future allocation goes. And we're working on that, and we intend to have something for the board to react to, hopefully in February. So obviously, that's important. But ultimately, your system is a growing system, and it takes a long time for expansions to go through. This isn't somewhere you snap your fingers and you have actual capacity. You have to think ahead, you have to plan ahead and work ahead to be able to get that capacity online, if you in fact want it. Now, the board decides that you don't want it, that's a different decision, but those are things we need to know.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, back in that 2006 time period, the Twelve Mile Creek plant, which we're talking about, was a three-million gallon plant. All the growth that we've had in that area and some in northern Union County, where we pump it from the Poplin Road Pump Station down to the Twelve Mile Creek, all of that massive growth that we hear complaints about, and the traffic, and all the things that we've had to discuss tonight, is still 2.7 million gallons higher than it was in 2006. So we added, we've added the actual flow to that plant, just for reference, in a decade is 2.7 million gallons more. And we're talking about doing three million gallons more that we have left on that plant after the expansion. So there's a lot of things that can factor into that. What stopped it was Mooresville said, we're tired of you paying fines. The Department of Water Quality said, quit paying $10,000 a month fines and polluting the creek. And they said, instead, just fix the problem. And we're fixing the problem. And that lull that we had with the economic downturn in 2008, and the perfect storm of no sewer capacity, economic downturn, housing stop, a lot of things gave Union County a time to catch up and breathe. And now we have a water source on the northern part of the county, now we have some other things going on, but still, we have a lot of sewer capacity, more sewer capacity than we used in a decade almost from 2000.
I want to point out, we have more on this side of the Twelve Mile Creek. We don't have a lot on the Crooked Creek side. Again, that's a board decision.
We use two million gallons a day, almost, on the Crooked, on the, on the, from the Poplin Road Pump Station back to the Twelve Mile Creek. So all that growth in the southern, in the Catawba Basin, is minus two million gallons that we're using in the diversion line.
Certainly.
So, again, all the complaints that we're getting are on four million gallons a day. That's the complaints that we hear about the roads, we hear about all the other stuff going on. Again, just to put it in, just to put it in context, about the same amount of growth in the southern part in the Catawba Basin, where's the Chapel, Marvin, Waxall, Weddington, southern part of Indian Trail, southern part of Stallins, those areas, that's on four, basically, a lot less than kind of what we're having available. So a lot of sewer available. We had 13 million gallons permitted and pending on the Twelve Mile Creek plant in 2006. It never came to fruit. People were lining up, getting everybody that, I think everybody that came to Public Works and said, may I have a permit? They'd say, yeah, and do you have any friends that need permits? Thirteen million gallons. When we went up with the numbers to Department of Water Quality and showed them the numbers of people that were permitted and pending, they were astonished, and that's what stopped everything, because we were out of hand. And I commend this staff and the people who've been working on it in the last several years about getting that number to a manageable number. And it is for sure that we have to be cautious right now to not go over that number, not just because of not polluting, we won't be polluting, but it's, it's an abundance of caution that people don't go out and make bad decisions with their money. If a developer goes out and buys land right now to develop with no ability to get sewer for it, that's where I see it as our fault, that we didn't tell them upfront, it may not be here. And I've been pretty consistent with that message, and you have too, Brian, over the last few years, that it's very important that people don't go invest money to do something that we can't cover. But there's no lack of houses to be built. There's thousands and thousands of houses that can be built on the capacity that we already have planned for, just in that one area. But, yeah, it's not, home building will not stop, it's just the planning for it needs to be, it needs to be precious, scarce, like we're talking about with the municipalities. When you have a scarcity of a resource, the thought process that goes in for the towns and the county needs to be more thoughtful in how we rezone properties, where we rezone properties, and when we rezone properties.
That's my understanding of what the reason is for your allocation policy is for, for obviously a scarce commodity and for there to be, you know, decisions that are made that are in reference to scarcity of that commodity.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, thank you.
Brian, one thing, just so you don't get a bunch of phone calls tomorrow about Crooked Creek availability. I believe I heard previously, there's one part of the Crooked Creek Basin that can't take anymore.
So we have a capital project that is going through the process. It is an interceptor project. Because of that interceptor, there's areas that cannot flow to the plant. However, what we've done is through the board's decision on certain ordinance changes that we brought to you, if a project gets to the permitting phase where it could be permitted, but we cannot permit it because that capital project is holding it up, we're essentially creating what we call a soft hold, and we give them some level of protection, I should say, so that that capital project doesn't prevent them from moving forward in the future. So now they have to reach the point where they can be permitted, there has to be capacity available at that time when they're ready to be permitted, but if they are, then we essentially create a soft hold, sort of pull that to the side, and we keep moving forward with the rest of the flow that's available for that project.
Okay, you just created some more questions. When you give them that soft hold, I would say, if I was them, when will the soft hold be turned loose?
It depends on when the interceptor is actually closer to construction. So we have a process for, by which, when it reaches certain milestones, then we can release them for construction. That way, their project is not constructed and then sitting there waiting for us to have the interceptor done. So we have a milestone where when they get to, we get to a certain point for construction of the interceptor, then they can move forward with construction with their project. So they sort of dovetail with each other.
Okay. Well, hopefully, anybody that got excited when they heard that, they still know that they're in the interceptor, either good area or bad.
The key to that is, and everyone should understand, is there's still a limited capacity at that plant, and if they haven't submitted, they need to get their plans in and start going through the review process, because once the capacity is consumed, then it's, then it's gone at that point. There isn't any more for us to give at that point, until the board gives us different direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the Union County Transportation 74 Express Bus Service. I feel like this is a problem that me and Commissioner Williams created when we were brainstorming on a go-to phone call.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and Manager Watson. Thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Janet Payne, I'm the Assistant Director for the Human Services Agency. And tonight, Teresa Torres, who is the Director of Union County Transportation, and I would like to take a few minutes to briefly discuss Union County's transportation system, specifically focusing on the 74 Express service. Staff over the last year from the Planning Department, as well as the Human Services Agency, have begun analyzing options for the best use of county funds, specifically to support human service-related transportation needs, as well as commuter needs potentially along the 74 Express service. And in the next few slides, we're going to touch on a couple of different factors, ridership and cost trends. Ultimately, our goal tonight is to get direction from you regarding the continued provision of this service. So a little bit of background, in 2004, Union County began contracting with the City of Charlotte to provide the 74X service between Union County and downtown Charlotte. Service has always been provided with stops in Monroe and Indian Trail. Initially, service did include stops in Wingate, but that Initially, service did include stops in Wingate, but that was discontinued in FY05. And then in FY08, service was expanded to include stops in Marshville for a period of three years. And Marshville had received a CMAC, which is Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant, to cover a portion of that cost. But when that funding ran out, that service was discontinued to Marshville. And so since FY12, the service has included three morning and evening stops in only Monroe and Indian Trail, and then going to downtown Charlotte. One important thing to note is that the stated goal of the Express Bus Service is to reduce vehicular traffic on the roadways in Mecklenburg County. And the Express Bus Service does generally serve the Central Business District and professional white-collar workers going downtown to the Central Business District. In contrast, Union County Transportation Service is focused on human service-related needs. And we specifically focus on, provide demand response service, also weekday, Monday through Friday, with trips into Matthews and Charlotte and Pineville, but a lot just within Union County. And our priority is assisting those with mobility issues, special needs, the elderly, and residents who need assistance getting to and from medical appointments or work. So a couple of points on this next slide. In thinking about service provision, it's really important to think about both funding and expense. And cost for the provision of the 74X service is shared between Union County, between the City of Charlotte, and the riders of this service, of the 74X Express service. The City of Charlotte and Union County each pay 50% of the net operating cost after Fairbox revenues are deducted. And other than the three-year period in which Marshville applied the CMAC funding to help offset costs, no municipalities have contributed to Union County's cost share. Expenses are increasing. They are expected to continue to do so. And looking just at FY16 through FY20, the Fairbox revenue has decreased from a high of about 101,000 to a low of 70,000. And at that same time, Union County's cost share has gone from about 99,000 to an FY20 high of 131,000. FY22 agreement, which we are currently in FY22, but we have not yet received a finalized agreement from the City of Charlotte yet for that, but we have recently received information from staff, and the estimated cost share, we believe, is going to be approximately $154,000 for FY22, which is definitely an increase over any prior year. Additionally, in regard to expenses increasing, the Metropolitan Transit Commission, or MTC, which is the Policy Board for the Charlotte Area Transit System, is looking at potentially charging a higher operational rate for Express Bus Services to outlying counties. And we don't have specific information about that at, at this point, and so no vote has been taken or anything like that. But it is something to be mindful of as we move forward. And then finally, regarding funding, Union County's cost share was initially funded from 100% county general funds. Starting in FY19, however, we applied for and received 5307 urban grant funding. And the Human Services Agency recommended to offset the county's direct operating costs by applying 5307 funds to cover 50% of the county's expense for this service. So the question that we pose tonight, and, and in an ongoing manner, isn't specifically regarding whether the expense is justified, but rather, given the limited resources that we have, what is most prudent use of limited county and grant funds? Should we focus available county dollars on the provision of human service-related transportation, getting our residents to medical appointments and other necessary services? Or should we continue to fund 74X Express service at the level that we've historically done, with the goal of enabling reduced congestion on the roadways in Mecklenburg County and provision of trips for workers from Union County to Charlotte Central Business District? Teresa Torres is now going to present the last few slides, and specifically, beginning with ridership trends.
Good evening. Thinking about the key component of service provision, it is important to consider our ridership trends. It is important to take into account the impact that COVID has had on transportation overall, as it has certainly impacted transit demands across all areas and types of service. Ridership trends, as shown on this graph, indicate reduced use of 74X service even before COVID and the shift towards remote work. And conversely, indicated an increased need for demand response, human service-related trips within Union County. Since COVID, transit ridership for commuting to downtown has decreased much more sharply, due to the fact that remote work has increased substantially. While some increase is expected, remote work is likely to remain a norm, and Express Bus Service will likely not return to pre-COVID trends. Conversely, demand for the human service-related transportation that Union County Transportation provides has increased. The graph shows this. From FY16 to FY20, annual 74X trips completed have fallen from 33,999 to pre-COVID low of 20,749. Over this same period, the county's human service-focused transportation trips increased from 74,176 to a 12-month high of 85,816 for calendar year 2019. FY total, FY20 totaled only 67,374 due to COVID restrictions the last quarter of that year. However, FY22 is trending towards a total of 72,715 total trips. UC Transportation is also completing several thousand meal delivery trips to provide frozen meals to our senior nutrition clients, which is, if taken into account, would actually bring FY22 anticipated totals up to 79,162 passengers and meal trips delivered.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for interrupting, but I, I was just speaking to a citizen last night. Now, these Union County human services-related trips, that's the vans?
Yes, sir.
That are going around and picking up? This gentleman had a stroke and lost his license for a period of six months. And, you know, it was some difficulties of, you know, the wife having to get him and the child and everything. What's the cost on that? And how does somebody access that?
So currently, there is only one funding that we have. It's our Rural General Public Funding, which is $2 each way, $4 around trip. Every other trip, we, it's funded by the grants and county dollars.
So no matter where in the county, that person could call in and, and say, "I need a trip to my doctor's office. I need a trip to the grocery store." And they would schedule that trip for a particular time and taking it? Is it pretty flexible, or is it pretty, is it?
It's pretty flexible, but there are some restrictions for us for the amount of vans we have and, and drivers that we have. So they register with us. And pretty much, if it's a 48-hour advance notice, business notice, we can, we do the trip.
So, so for example, if he needed to go to the grocery store, and, and he calls up, $2 there, $2 back, and he pays that on the bus?
If he's out in the rural public, so in the rural county, it's two, it would be $2. If he's anywhere else, or he meets other funding criteria, it's absolutely no charge, and we do shopping trips, sorry, on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I didn't know how to answer his question, and you just helped me a lot. I told him I didn't think it was much, but that can be a big help to his family.
We're very fortunate.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Rush, and I believe, Ms. Torres, you'll verify this. People that use it on a regular basis, they're pretty good. They know how to work with y'all so that they get their doctor's appointments and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. So when they register, they get guidelines. We mail out guidelines to them. It tells us when we go into Charlotte, when we go into Matthews. Because obviously, their father off, we can't, we don't have the hours that are 8 to 5. We cut those hours short. So they get all that information when they register with us.
I've never, I haven't heard any complaints from citizens, just compliments on, you know, once they learn how to interface with y'all on information, they get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Additionally, when thinking about provisions of transportation service, it is important for us to focus on the why. So why does Union County spend funding to pay for transportation service? As mentioned at the beginning of this discussion, Union County's Demand Response Service is focused on provisions for transportation to help the need of human service-related needs. Of the trips provided by Union County Transportation directly, we are seeing an increase in the percentage of total trips taken by passengers over the age of 60 and passengers who are non-ambulatory. The percent of trips taken by residents over 60 has increased from 42% in FY16 to a high of 63% in FY21, and is trending towards about 59% in FY22. The percent of trips taken by those who are non-ambulatory has gone from 12% in FY16 to a high of 19% in FY21, and the trending towards about 18% in FY22. Provisions of transportation service in our seniors and non-ambulatory population is very important, as access to medical care and other services has far-reaching impacts on our community. The trends shown here are especially impactful in light of the fact that the county's population is aging. And according to the North Carolina Office of Share Budget and Management, 50% of UC's, of UC's population will be 60-plus by 2039. In the light of the information that staff's initial research presented, we felt it very prudent to share this data and see, if only stakeholders felt like it was valuable, it was valuable to discuss. Staff started its presentation in October to the Transportation Advisory Board TAB, which is a group mandated by the NC DOT and appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. The TAB requested staff bring back recommended options they could review and potentially endorse for recommendations. Subsequently, staff developed four scenarios for discussion and met twice with Indian Trail and Monroe managers and planning directors to introduce and review the existing 74X Express Bus Service and to solicit the municipality's feedback on potential options being considered. All information was brought back to the TAB in its January meeting. At its January 5, 2022 meeting, the TAB voted unanimously to recommend Scenario 3 and requested that it be presented for consideration to county management and the Board of County Commissioners. We are here before you, asking that you endorse the TAB's recommendation and direct the county manager to: A) Complete a study in coordination with the municipalities along the 74 corridor between the Union County and Mecklenburg County, and optimal use of available local federal funds currently being used for the service. B) Maintain the existing 74X service through FY23. Or C) Coordinate with Indian Trail and Monroe municipalities to enable a cost-sharing agreement for a conducted 74X service in FY23 and beyond, if prudent based on study results. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If I could ask a question, how many days' notice is required for us to give a notice of termination to CATS for the current express service?
It's 120, correct?
125.
125 days, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, how are you doing?
Yeah, you, you keep referring to trips, especially on the 74X service.
Yes, sir.
What's the ridership? I mean, is that one person on that bus per trip?
Each trip is one person. And so, in a one-way trip, if I were to go from Monroe to Charlotte, that counts as one trip. So I might ride from Monroe to Charlotte, and then I might ride back that afternoon. Or it could be that I ride in the morning, and you ride back in the afternoon, but you've got a different ride end in the morning.
My point is, how many people are on those buses going back and forth? Are we sending that bus with one or two riders?
Sometimes, yes, sir.
That's, Commissioner Hems, that's what Commissioner Williams and I started this whole thing about. And they're going to do a study and find out just exactly how many people are riding it and what it's costing.
We don't have records of that, of what, past year? We don't, we hadn't kept records?
We get records from Charlotte, but they are not, they have a system where it's when someone passes a line, it counts as a trip. So we do have those numbers, they're just not accurate.
We have the, the specific total numbers that we provided you, just to provide a little bit of additional clarification, are accurate. When you ask how many are on each bus, it's literally counted via a laser, and the laser sometimes double counts or misses someone. It, it, it just does. But when each person gets on and they pay their fare, that counts as one. So the total fares paid in a given day, and we have an average ridership, what they provide us with is an average ridership per day, per weekday, which we can certainly provide back to you.
I think that would be helpful making this decision.
Yes, sir.
I do want to clarify that the trips that we're talking about, the 74X Express, those are CATS buses. They, they're not our vehicles.
We're paying.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So I don't care whose bus it is.
Well, you would have been proud of that day that we skinned this CAT because we, we went after it pretty good. But then we were told that we do need to know exact numbers. In fact, Commissioner Williams volunteered to ride it to do the count.
Every day?
Okay, so y'all need, we need to act on this, okay. I'll make a motion to direct the county manager to implement the Transportation Advisory Board recommendation. Two, A) Complete a study to determine optimal transit service along the US 74 corridor between Union County and Mecklenburg County, and optional use of available local federal funds currently being used for that service. B) Maintain the existing 74X Express service through FY23. And C) Coordinate with the municipalities of Indian Trail and Monroe to enable a cost-sharing agreement for continued 74X Express service in FY23 and beyond, if prudent based on the results of the study. And what Commissioner Williams was asking, once a week, even though we're authorized them to go through FY23, we can end it with a 125-day notice after we get the results of the study. And we're also asking Indian Trail and Monroe to participate with us, aren't we? Where we used to pay for it.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think it's also noteworthy that Indian Trail, Monroe have new boards, and most of their members are new members, so.
Right.
You know, the ridership, not just on this express service, but I understand on pretty much all the express services in the region is taking a, a nosedive. You know, maybe that rebounds quickly, maybe it doesn't. But I think, given that we can exit out of this agreement with CATS relatively easy, easily, given that we have new boards in Indian Trail and Monroe, that I think we'll have a lot to say about what the look of this new service might be. I think it makes sense to support your motion.
And, and this is instituting, getting them to participate in the cost of it, where we've been paying it off.
Cost sharing, yeah.
So if, if, if they want to keep it, they're going to have to participate with us. Yes, sir.
I'd like to add one caveat. I'd like, at our next meeting, you come back and tell us what our ridership has been. You tell me you can tell for sure about the people that pay to go on. I'd like for that to be a part of the motion.
Okay.
If you do a friendly amendment to add that, and I'll support it with that amendment.
I'll add that. And ladies, I don't know, how many round trips does the 74X Express bus make a day?
There are three in the morning and three in the afternoon. So three stops at both Monroe and Indian Trail in the morning and return trips in the afternoon.
And if I looked at one of the slides right, it's like 5,000 for the year, right?
Yes, sir.
So you've got six round trips, and it's only producing 5,000 riders. So I think, but this is the beginning of finding out where the money is going and is it prudently spent.
Ridership per bus.
Sir?
Ridership per bus.
Per bus, yeah. Okay, we have a motion with an amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jensen, if you would come to the podium. Resolving Petition CZ2021-006, City Switch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. As you stated, this is, item is regarding conditional rezoning 2021-006, which we've titled City Switch Rezoning. which we've titled City Switch rezoning. This is a request to rezone about four-point-eight acres over in Sandy Ridge Township from B2 conditional with some conditions to B2 conditional with modifying those conditions in order to build a one-hundred-and-sixty-foot telecommunications tower with a ten-foot lightning rod and a six-thousand-ninety-nine square foot area within a six-thousand-ninety-nine square foot area of the parcel. Couple of, about four conditions that are on this rezoning request, that the height wouldn't, including the ten-foot lightning rod, would not exceed one-hundred-and-seventy feet, that the facility, that the tower would not have any lighting. An easement approximately twenty feet wide for a trail would be provided along the western portion of the property to connect the trail under construction in the Village of Marvin. And that would, construction and maintenance would be the responsibility of the Village of Marvin or is designated, and that the wireless communications facility would have an S-two screening around the fenced-in area. The Planning Board considered this request, and they offered a recommendation to deny the application. The Board, you held a public hearing earlier this month, back on the third. You heard a presentation from the applicant regarding this item. The applicant talked about the need for service in the area, gave an overview of the site plan, how that site plan looked at the ordinance and how it complied with the ordinance, and also gave an overview of what those ordinance requirements were. You also heard from some of the neighbors who spoke in opposition regarding this application. Some of the things you heard was that, based on the height and the nearby uses and how markedly different the adjacent land uses were, that this was out of character, that the tower was not in harmony because of how close it was to the adjacent properties. And some of the neighbors noted that they had concerns over the potential of debris falling off the tower onto nearby properties, given how close the tower was. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
No questions. I would like to make a motion to deny the rezoning petition CZ twenty-two-one dash oh-oh-six to rezon the property appearing on the tax map as parcel number six dash two-oh-one dash oh-oh-seven A in the Sandy Ridge Township from B2 CZ with conditions to B2 CZ with modified conditions accepted by the applicant and adopt the consistency and reasonable statement for denial. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one-sixty-D dash six-oh-five, the Union County Board of Commissioners, the Board, does hereby find and determine that this rezoning petition is inconsistent with Union County Comprehensive Plan and that denial of the proposed map amendment is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth below. Each of the below individually numbered reasons is sufficient separately to support denial of the proposed map amendment as reasonable and in the public interest. Number one, the prominent silhouette of the tower over the adjacent landscape is out of character with the surrounding uses in the area, especially given its height relative to its location on the property. Two, the design of the tower is inharmonious with surrounding land uses, given its proposed location being so close to adjacent properties and it's only meeting minimal landscaping requirements. Three, the existing adjacent uses in the area are markedly different from this proposed use, which also makes the proposed use out of character with the surrounding area. Four, the fall zone of the tower is located nearly adjacent to active commercial property uses, which allows for potential, for the potential for falling debris in certain circumstances that would endanger the safety and welfare of those persons on such property. Five, the plan specifically calls for municipal coordination near adjacent municipalities regarding this rezoning. The Village of Marvin, which has planning jurisdiction adjacent to this parcel, has passed a resolution noting it does not support the rezoning due to incompatibility and safety and welfare concerns for its residents, who are also residents of Union County. Any comments? Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion to deny. All in favor? Motion fails, or rezoning fails. The next item, the ARPA funding, we're going to park that until the next meeting so that all commissioners can be here. Mr. Manager, you want to give us an update on Anson County water?
I believe Mr. Matthews is prepared to do that this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you guys again. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So one of the things that I've been asked to do is going to give you an update on where we stand with our Anson water contract. If you're, I believe you're aware that we've had some issues recently with having to switch over to our Catawba water supply. This is due to some mechanical issues that Anson County is having with their, with their water facility. There were a couple of things that occurred. One, they had an issue at their plant that was unknown. They didn't, they didn't realize that was occurring. And then they were working on a potential for one of their tanks to do a, take the tank out of service and actually rehab it, and they found that there were some leaks in the tank. And so those two combined things required us to get off of their system, at least for a period of time. What we've been told is that they are still working on the tank, and the tank obviously is going to take some time. They believe they've corrected the issue at the plant, however, because of the fact that the tank is still out, you put that much pressure on the system, we're concerned that there'll be other main breaks, blowouts, other issues that we'll have to deal with. So we've made the decision that it's essentially impractical for us to go back on Anson water while they're still having their facility issues. That's roughly sometime in mid-February before we'll be back on Anson water. I say that all to sort of let you know that we have a number of issues with Anson County as far as the deliverability of the water that we contract with them for. Some of them are water quality issues that we have to deal with them, and other ones are really related to actually getting the water that we pay them for. There are a number of days where we actually have to shut our system down and can switch back over to Catawba water because of issues with their system. Just in the December, I'm sorry, just in two thousand and twenty-one, we had ten events where we had to switch over to the Catawba water supply. That's almost one a month, and they're frequent when we have them. I'm all letting you know this, because obviously the Board is aware that we have a Yadkin Water Supply project that we're working towards. It's my understanding that, you know, we're on target for that coming online. The contract for Anson County is due to expire in 2024. We'll have to make some decisions about whether or not we want to talk to Anson County about expanding that contract for any timeframe. Do we want to renegotiate a contract? What do we want to do as far as that contract goes? My understanding is late 2023 is when we're supposed to have Yadkin water available. Obviously, that's keeping everything in, on schedule, less no issues we have to deal with. So we have a short window there where we're going to need to decide, what do we want to do in long-term with our Anson County contract? I just want you to be aware that we are considering this, we're going to bring options back to the Board. We do want to talk to our partners in Anson County, because they have been our partners. Obviously, that's how we've served the eastern side of the county, and we're sensitive to that. But there's going to come a point in time where we have adequate water to serve that eastern side, and we may have to decide, how much do we need Anson in the future? So if you have any questions for me, just want to give you an update of where we stand for the Anson County project.
Commissioner Rushen.
How are we managing the inter-basin transfer from Catawba to Yadkin, or the Catawba to Rocky River sub-basin?
I'm not sure I mean, understand what you mean.
We've got an eight-million-gallon inter-basin tran, well, we've got a set amount of water that we can move across. We're missing out on about three million gallons per day from Anson, or is that less?
It's, the contract with Anson is up to four. We, it's my understanding that they can't really supply us with four, whatever constraints they have, they really can't meet four if we were to try to get four for them. We routinely do anywhere from about one and a half to sometimes up to three or over three million gallons a day. It's generally in one and a half to two and a half range.
And that covers southeastern Union County.
It covers the...
Unionville, Fairview, over all the way to highway two-eighteen water tank.
So that, yes, sir, that water comes in, and then we actually pump it up to the two-eighteen tank, and then that fills the rest of that sort of eastern, northeastern area of the county, as well as the Wingate and Marshville areas.
So we take across so many millions of gallons a day?
As far as the Catawba water, yes.
Right, and then we put back two million approximately.
Yes, sir.
With the Poppin Road Pump Station. So are we in any kind of violation of our inter-basin transfer?
So far, we're not, no, sir. We've been fortunate, we have not been, not been in a situation where we've had a violation to our, our agreement, our inter-basin transfer.
So all the existing homes that are on water now are covered by Catawba, and that's not a problem now. Are we going to start sending out letters soon about not watering loans and things like that? When does that start, spring?
I don't think we're at that stage at this point. We are always in a drought stage, stage zero, because of our requirements through that Yadkin water stuff. So we're always at that stage. I don't think we reached a stage where we're actually going to require people to start reducing some things.
And that's the concern that I have, because we had a lot of people, even former county commissioners, came, you know, have called me in the past and said, "We don't have any water." And we do have water, it's just what basin is that water in?
Sure.
But right now, the Catawba Basin is covering the entirety of Union County with the exception of Monroe and partially Marshville.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Where it's covered with what we have.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think you just made a great argument for Yadkin.
I think, I think the argument is, is that Commissioner Williams, when he ran, said that Catawba could handle everything, and they can't. I think, I think I was kind of making his argument a little bit on that.
Commissioner Hems.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, they also, there is an emergency clause that allows us to cede our inter-basin transfer during that situation.
There could be, I can't state, you know, with, you know, a lot of factual information that I know that. There certainly could be an emergency clause in there, and obviously, we would, we would indicate that to the state if we were in that situation, that we were having to use this because of that. I don't want to say there is or isn't, it sounds plausible to me, I just don't have that information to say for a fact that that's what's it is.
That was my understanding, and one of the reasons, too, that misinformation went out is that we were going to use Yadkin in the western part of the county. They're going to be tied together for situations like this.
Sure.
If we change a switch, if we lose one or the other resource.
Certainly.
So it's going to give us some security when the two systems are up and running that we've never had before.
It's redundancy, yes, sir. That is part of the plan.
And in summation, Brian, we've not violated any inter-basin transfers.
No, sir.
We also have the availability through some improvements, and check-flow valves done with Charlotte water where we can get some water from up there.
That is correct, yes, sir. We're able to, the nine-thirty-five zone, I believe is what it is, serves that area with Charlotte water if necessary. We have an interconnect with them there.
So it's blue skies and it's not falling.
No, sir. I, it's not falling at all, I just want to make you aware of some of the issues we deal with, with the Anson County side.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
One, one thing that I would, you know, not to get so far down into the weeds, but when we talk about inter-basin transfers and the Anson water supply, that's actually, that water comes to Union County on Anson County's inter-basin transfer that's grandfathered. That's not, you know, we're not receiving that water from Anson County as part of any inter-basin transfer that we own. It emanates in their jurisdiction, comes to us, so it's, it is their IBT that comes to Union County and services Union County in this basin. So not that it makes any, any change to what you had to offer, Commissioner Rushen, but, you know, that is a nuance that needs to be understood.
With that answered, you know, when we have, when we have water that is coming now, if it lasts longer than February, is that going to be an issue? Because when we do get into those warmer months, when we're using more water, watering loans, doing things like that, they are going to have this fixed, because I kind of heard two different messages there, Brian. I heard, it's our decision, and I heard it's their problem, but our decision. Are we, you said that they could provide it, but we're not taking that chance because of infrastructure, and that's prudent, but...
Yeah, they, the, what we heard from the plant operator is that they had corrected the issue at the plant. They had attempted to actually supply some water, they had some additional breaks, those were repaired, and we said, you know, we think that right now it's probably best that you focus on getting your tank repaired, and then that way we can come back on Anson. We don't worry about any pressure issues, because that's where they run into, their lines break, they have damages, and then we have to go right back off and go back on the Catawba. So rather than just going back and forth, back and forth, let's just stay on Catawba until they can get all of it corrected.
Yeah, and I think if, because we're on the Rocky River sub-basin, the Rocky River flows in upstream from where that, so I don't...
It does.
...think you would have an inter-basin transfer. Basically, you're just putting the water in through a loop.
The cork rule.
Yeah, so it's not too much in the weeds, but, but, you know, we do need to, again, when people, I just want to be careful as a messaging, and this maybe is for our public relations folks, that when we're doing our messaging this year, maybe instead of having the ice cream cone melting and the water catastrophe going on, I know why we do that, because we're trying to send a message where required by the IBT to do that, but I don't think we need to panic our public that there's not going to be any drinking water. And in years past, prior to the Yadkin project being approved, there was a lot of panicking of the public.
Sure.
And I don't think we should do that. I think they need to know that things are in hand and working, and, and we have two or three million gallons a day that was offered to us, but, and being prudent with our system and our repairs to our system that we might have to make, that that's why the water's not coming.
We're, we're confident...
Again, we're sending, we're going to send conflicting messages if we're not careful.
Sure. We're confident they'll have the tank repaired in the timeframe that they say they'll have it repaired, and then we won't have, we'll go back on Anson water.
Thank you.
Brian, one more thing, just for the public's information, a lot of times when those lines, by them increasing pressure, when they break, even in Anson County, we have assisted them to repair the lines, is that not correct?
We've offered assistance for a number of issues, pumps, whatever we can help them with, and in some cases, they, they accept that assistance, and in some cases, they don't, but absolutely, we are available to help any way we can.
So if we can make it to the tank repair, then we'd be better off and not be damaging lines, their lines?
Yes, sir. We think that that is the prudent decision.
Right. Okay, we had Commissioner Williams wants to read a something to him and bring it before.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion I'd like to make and then invite discussion certainly on it, so we can give some color to it. I make the following motion, that the Board of County Commissioners of Union County oppose any application made this year to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to designate the Monroe Expressway in whole or in part as a scenic byway, highway. Additionally, the Board of County Commissioners requests a public hearing by the Citizens' Participation Unit of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, should any application made this year be recommended for approval.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to give a little background on this. Earlier this month, in Cart... Earlier this month, in Cart Pos TCC meeting, I discovered that the Turnpike Authority is pursuing, is putting together an application to designate the Monroe Expressway as a scenic byway, and that they're acting in considerable haste on it. I don't know if this is going to be a good thing or a bad thing. It may be something that at some point we embrace, but they're acting in haste on it. Apparently, there's an early February deadline that they're trying to meet in terms of getting this application together, and I think we need a lot more information before, you know, we, you know, we consent to this sort of thing. So, I just want to make sure that that this Board expresses its opinion that we do not support an application for the Monroe Expressway to be a scenic byway or highway this year, and that should the North Carolina Department of Transportation proceed anyway on an application to make that designation, that we demand a public hearing. As I understand, we're allowed to under the Administrative Code.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to support the motion. Just for lack of understanding, I went and looked at some of the information on the scenic highway and byways and, you know, what kind of, will this affect people's property rights along that? Will it affect other issues? Will it affect Wingate University with some of their plans? There's just a lot of unknown to it that that I would like to get more information on before the code authority asks for it, and I think you're right, we do need a public hearing on it, let people that may be affected by it have their questions answered, and I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
I'll be supporting it, too. There was one moment of humor when David told me about that, and Lee, you, we can be proud of Bjorn. Secretary Cooksey or Director Cooksey said there wouldn't be any billboards allowed along the scenic highway, and Bjorn said, "Well, Union County doesn't allow them anyway." So, that sort of shot that idea pretty good. Any other discussion? We've got a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Managers' comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Just one thing this evening, just wanted to call to your attention the work that our emergency services personnel across this county performed over the weekend with the winter mix, even weather event that we had, monitoring the emergency communications channels on Sunday. It's probably one of the most active days that I have ever heard in CECOM or in our emergency communication center. Incredibly busy, considering the type of weather we had on Sunday. Would like to recognize, you know, really all of the emergency service agencies across the county, particularly those rural fire departments. This this event seemed to affect or impact the rural fire departments more so than some of the others, and those volunteers were out taking care of business all day long into the into the night. And and one of the things that struck me in listening to the different types of calls that was coming in is, you know, we count on our volunteer fire departments in this county to be there when we have a fire, and we count on them to respond when there's a bad wreck and somebody needs assistance, you know, to to get out of a bad, bad wreck situation, right? And we count on them to be there as first responders when there's a medical emergency. But over the weekend, they were responding when the power cut and it couldn't to block off roads, when down power lines, to clear roads when trees had fallen across the roads and limbs were in the roads, and DOT couldn't get there to to respond. Our volunteer fire departments were responding and opening up those roadways to make it safe to travel. Where it wasn't safe to travel, they were out there putting up barricades and manning those barricades. In some cases, they put up barricades, and some folks decided that the barricades didn't need to be there, and they moved them, and so the fire departments had to go back and reestablish the barricades. But it really struck me that they are there in all types of weather for whatever this community, this county, needs for them to do, and they're glad to do it, willing to do it, and and I really just want to express my appreciation to the volunteer fire departments in the county for doing that for our community over the weekend. The other thing that would be remiss if I did not also recognize our emergency services, our emergency management services group, who prepared us with all the information as a management staff leading up to the storm event, kept us updated with regular briefings and information, so we knew exactly what was going on. They had pre-staged both services and equipment to be able to respond in the worst-case scenarios, and they did a fantastic job, and I really do appreciate what they what they did this weekend as well. And I understand that perhaps we might have some more winter weather coming our way this coming weekend and probably the weekend after, so I just encourage everyone to be safe and prepare ahead of time. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rushen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the funny things about tonight and the, you know, what we just had to make a motion on with the with the bypass, just a little bit of history in Union County. We've talked about Seward, and I've talked about the bypass, and just a link can just show you how decisions can make things happen. Many years ago, at Lake Lower, we were on a retreat, and the county commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, voted to tell the county manager at the time, he was, he was told by U.S. Fish and Wildlife that if if we would agree not to build a sewer plant up north, that they would release the funding we needed to, not a toll road, but a free Monroe bypass, that we would get the money to pay for it, and and they would release all their holds on it, and it would work out. And the manager was at that meeting, we talked about a little bit earlier, and rather than doing that, the manager went his own way and made his own decision back then, and and even told a group of mayors and commissioners that they just weren't going to do what the commissioners said. They, and very frustrated by that, but when you look at, you're driving on a road now, the cost and the decisions that are made by not only the Board of Commissioners, but staff as well, can affect us negatively to where we're driving on a road now and having to pay to drive on it. We get bills in the mail that are not even our license plate, because X's look like K's and vice versa, and we've got a situation now where we don't know what kind of effect that road's going to have on property rights in Union County. So, you know, we need to be very thoughtful in our decisions, and and hopefully that this is something that's not going to affect us one way or the other, but we do need to keep an eye on this because usually anything involving that that bypass has been negative for Union County. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
No comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Hales.
Yes, thank you very much. I, first of all, I want to say I appreciate the managers' comments on our emergency services because they they did have it extremely busy. We also need to include our law enforcement. They do a fantastic job, and they were out there hand in hand with our emergency services. So, I'd like to thank them. But that also brings me to the fact that one of the things that that, one of the organizations in Union County that supports our law enforcement and helps to solve these horrendous crimes that incur every once in a while is a group called Crime Stoppers. And this Friday, Crime Stoppers is having their annual barbecue. It's a fundraiser that they pay out, and I think this this past year, they paid out two $5,000 awards that took murderers off off the streets. They do, they do a lot of great work, and it's all volunteer, but this Friday at the Ag Center, starting at 11 o'clock, where they will start serving barbecue. If you're looking for tickets still, most of the sheriff's deputies have extra tickets that they're carrying. There you go, Edwin. And and the thing about it is, is come out and talk to us. I've had the privilege to work on the serving line for the last eight years and get, it's a great opportunity to meet, meet the citizens, and so I ask you to come out and support Crime Stoppers because clearly they work very diligently supporting our citizens. So, with that, thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to all the staff that has sat here patiently. This was going to be a short meeting, and it may have set a little record. I appreciate, if you, if you're going to be a county commissioner, Union County is the place to be it. We're, we're all proud of all our employees, and we appreciate all you do. Thank you, and I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.